I'm going to order the Monday, April 18th, regular meeting of the Gilpec School Board. And we will begin by touching allegiance to the flag. And Kim, do you need this?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome all visitors and media representatives who are here today. And I also would like to ask again if we have any constituent communications? No, okay. Then the next order of business is item five, where we approve of the consent agenda. We are approving of the agenda and then the approval of the minutes. And I discovered something that probably needs to be changed. But first, I need a motion to approve the minutes. And second, then we can discuss. So may I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Go ahead. Alca moves and Jan seconds that we approve the agenda and the meeting minutes of March 14th. And I think it's just a type error, but if you look at March 14th, and I know Kim and Jan would don't mind this designation, but they're listed as student representatives.
I saw that.
So those names were just meant to be on director's present. And evidently, we had. And that brought up a question. Do we have a student representative here today? I know we have, we have one or is it two from the high school? Heather, you remember?
There was two from the high school last night.
Okay. We haven't, we haven't had a representative at the meeting for quite some time. And maybe you could make contact with them and see if they'll be able to attend some of our meetings. Thank you. Okay, any other for the rest of you? If you looked over the minutes? And is there anything that you think needs correction? No? All right, there's the motion to approve the minutes and the agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. The motion carries. Okay. Now, we are moving to the item six, which is the approval of accounts payable. And then the next item will be approval of monthly financials. So the first item is that we need to approve our accounts payable. May I have a motion to approve accounts payable?
Sir, move.
Gary, it's moved. May I have a second?
Second.
And Alca, second, that we approve accounts payable. Discussion. Has the finance committee have anything that they would like to have us look at or call to our attention on the accounts payable?
I believe so.
No, we didn't meet.
Yes.
And I think we went over everything, so it was quite a lot.
I have a question.
Yes.
Then your number 21190, page 14. Okay. Is that the bill for the dual credit class? And is that for the whole?
That's for a semester. We pay that twice a semester, yep. The way it works is we actually have an agreement with SCC. They bill us a big amount. And then we actually bill back an amount to them. And it's somewhere in the middle. But that's the way we have to do it. So, yep. And we did bill them this month as well.
Okay. Then the number 40047, page 22.
Okay.
Just for the, I believe, the renting of the athletic center or stuff?
Um, no, that's, that's from, you're talking about the athletic center invoices?
Yes.
Most of those are, are warmups.
Okay, I thought there was one that said rental.
Oh, is there a rental? Oh, hitting area rental, yes. That's because, that would be because we don't have a hitting facility and that's what they're using. He, there's a batting cage upstairs.
Right, and so is that gonna be like a monthly?
Um, you know what? I would have to ask Jason, and I don't know if Jason's...
Is that soccer?
It's soccer. I'm not for sure exactly.
I think it's a one-time fee, but don't poke me on that.
Okay, I'm just, if we get the facility, then that's an expense that we can eliminate.
Yep, yep.
Yeah.
And that's a new one, of course. We didn't have that last year. It's new just because they don't have it twice.
They were renting, correct, from First Christian from last year?
Um, did we rent?
That's right.
Yeah.
Okay, there's one, two, and a third.
Absolutely.
Any other? I like the motion on the floor. It's been moved and seconded to approve the accounts, the accounts payable. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. The motion passes. And then the next item, of course, is the approval of the monthly financials. And I need a motion to approve the monthly financials.
Sir, move.
Jan moves. May I have a second?
Second.
Kim, second. It has been moved and seconded that we approve the monthly financials. And here, and I will ask the finance committee or anyone else, as they went through the monthly financials, do you have any questions or any items that you'd like to point out to us for our consideration?
No. But I, I just was wondering if, looking at other schools also, they post their accounts payables and financials on the website page. So I didn't know if that would be possible also.
I, I can kind of, do you have some school districts I can look at?
Yeah, sure.
Once you, well, you can send me an email with those school districts. I can see what they're putting on there.
Yeah. So that'll be something more, you can share that with the community as well.
All right. Then we have the motion to approve. And it's been made and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. That motion carries. Now, we are item eight with our, the reports. And the first report, we'll give it to Heather Key on technology.
I stand here.
Oh, that's fine.
We want, we want...
Well, wait a minute about the mic.
We want the people to be able to see us, so then they know.
Now, there will be a question.
I want camera, all right. This isn't him or you. All right, so the board asked me to, with the technology committee meeting, and we've met twice so far this year. And we came up with our mission vision and goals. You should have that in your package. Questions about that? Our primary goal was to look at integrating technology into the classroom and the instruction. Also provide effective technology integration, training professional development for all our staff. Provide state-of-the-art hardware and software to facilitate and implement applications for instruction, learning, and management. Continue to monitor and upgrade our network bandwidth and infrastructure. And provide adequate funding for state-of-the-art hardware, software, and infrastructure replacements. One of the things we recognize is we have over $2 million worth of technology in the district. And we replace it on a, on a schedule. Because each item may replace more often or less often. Have a different life. It would be over $400,000 a year. And that's not something that's really a line item or budgeted out in a budget. So it's something that I think we need to look at. You know, there, it's a little more complicated than that because we have a lot of different funding sources. But it's not something that's been line item in the budget guaranteeing certain amounts in the budget for technology replacement. The budget that I have is for maintenance and repair, professional development with me and my staff, and network infrastructure. So it's not enough to compensate for replacement of computers in the district.
And I think we need to look at that because the strategic plan had, had that tech goal and how they were gonna get there, so.
Maybe your committee each year or by, twice a year could make recommendations to Heidi that she could bring to us.
Correct.
Or if something, how many are on your committee? On the technology committee?
However many you have on there, so.
Five or six.
One per every building. Couple of board members, couple of community members.
A year on there, Gary?
Yeah.
Who's the other board member?
I don't know.
And how often do you meet?
We've met twice so far this year. We're gonna meet again here in a couple of weeks. We already outlined future laptop replacements as a concern, as well as printing costs. I have three vendors looking at giving us a print assessment. See what we can do about printing costs. Typically, they recommend fewer machines, higher-volume machines, lower cost of page.
I understand the Chromebooks are functioning quite well.
Yes, Chromebooks are working well. And the third area that we want, we're gonna look at is our aging data center. We have servers in San Antonio. Getting it to be of an age that it's gonna be problematic. And part of it also includes our accounting system on there. And there's not adequate hardware and systems in place for disaster recovery. It's not something that we want to have a breakdown in the middle payroll or something like that. So we're looking at what we can do with that.
How old are those?
Those servers are seven to eight years old. They're typically replaced three to five.
And you mentioned something about it being the one in Burlington as well?
Yeah, our current system is I have, I back up the file or just the accounting database to a separate server at the high school, a separate server at the middle school, and a separate server up at Burlington at the AEA. So if we have a flyer at the high school, I have it at the middle school. If we have a tornado that wipes out the high school, middle school campus, I have it in Burlington. So that was the kind of the plan. The problem is, is that's just the data. There's no way to resurrect or it's, I don't have a server that I can just come out of the air and say, okay, I gotta load the operating system. If it wipes out, I have to buy a server. All that process of putting one in, getting it installed, installing the operating system, installing the software, and restoring the database. So it could take weeks to get a recovery. So that's one of the things we would like to avoid is put something in that can handle that. Quicker.
I think you say, don't buy anything for this.
I thought you were gonna write a check for us.
I like your report so far, but I like that vision statement where you want, I'm assuming all of us, the entire district and public to understand that it's no longer a supplement in the classroom, but it must be an integrated part. And if we're going to do that, you need a...
We need, it would be helpful to dedicate a budget every year that we know we can count on. Obviously, we can get grants, we can get other funding sources. But grants are, you know, competitive, so you may or may not get them. You know, we rely on technology now every day in our lives here at the school district. But waiting, wishing for a grant that doesn't happen doesn't really help us get what we need done. State has mandated requirements that we're following. They're putting off the Iowa assessment change to us computer-based system for another year at the desk unit, so.
So that's something they mandated, but they haven't funded?
Correct.
I did see where the third grade is the, has been cut off by the state because they acknowledge they haven't funded it. So all, most of the testing in the future will be on model.
Yep, probably.
It won't be, it won't be filling in this...
Our math testing is already, is our second assessment. That's already computerized. So we're just waiting to see what the state's gonna do with the Iowa assessment.
And we get any problems when we use that as far as any breakdowns or... But I, we keep reading in the paper in other school districts in other parts of the United States that maybe they have some significant problems.
You would have some problem, you know, you could anticipate some pickups if we went to the smarter balance system the first couple of years, just like math testing when they went. They switch from a client server to an online base in a couple of years. And fortunately, we held off a year implementing it. So some school districts got on and tried it early. You know, they had a lot more problems than we did, so we're very lucky.
So we've got another year.
That's what the rumor had.
Nothing official yet, but...
But, you know, that one, that's a statewide deal.
Yes, I know.
How that works.
About that.
It's down funding, just like you said, is a major issue.
Are there any other questions?
Just a comment. It was just fascinating to be at the technology meeting because they were talking in a computer language, which was really, the first part was very interesting. It was like, oh, it was great. Just to see that. It's a whole different language.
Well, yes. Okay, well, we appreciate the report. If you have anything else you wanna ask us about or suggest. If you had to prioritize your needs, you could easily do that about what? I'm not, you know, rest can't magically write a check. None of us can. But we, what are the most pressing needs of...
Well, like I said, we've identified, that's what we're looking at is just how many of these laptops we need to look at replacing for this next year. Grant management, like I said, I've got three vendors doing assessments, so looking at what that's gonna look like.
But those are numbers two and three. And priority, your number one was the replacement of the servers.
What all need to be done, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna put them all, same level of that.
Okay, put them all number one, then give me one A, one B, and one C.
That's why we need adequate funding.
And also, we talked about maybe rather than the replacing the teachers with a computer, maybe with a notebook, right? For a cheaper cost?
Yeah, I mentioned possibly doing, using Chromebooks instead of four teacher laptops. But there's some programs that it won't be able to run on the Chromebooks. So we'd have to come up with some sort of environment where they can, and that's an option. And we're looking at that as well with either some sort of a terminal service or a virtual desktop. So they would, the Chromebook would actually run a Windows environment on a remote server somewhere.
I was at middle school today. And the ladies just charged the library. I said, how very helpful you, is it Eric?
Kirk.
Kirk, yes, how helpful you were when she needed something. And she, I'm just gonna pass that on. She was very appreciative of that.
Yeah, the three of us work very hard to try and be responsive as we can, so.
Thank you. Thank you for your report. And then the transportation and maintenance. So you get to come and sit with us too if you want to. Oh, you've got something to offer.
Oh, he has a clicker. He can sit down.
So we're putting them here so our public can... Just identify the guy that calls the snow day.
Glasses in the way. Lights. Need the light, lights.
Yes. This is the first time I've had to do this, so I'm pretty nervous.
You don't have to be. Can you read?
Myself and Aaron take care of maintenance, transportation, grounds, and custodial staff. First, that's transportation. We have twelve regular bus drivers, eleven subs. We have nine regular bus routes, two special needs routes, and four special need auto routes. And before in autos, we take kids to Mount Pleasant, Quincy, Fort Madison, Burlington. And just for some on our daily, what we do at Hawthorne School, our bus routes, since September the first, we've had 361 changes of where kids go, when they're picked up, who they go home with. And then this is our mileage for last year. We have regular route miles of 47,000, special needs 21, and special needs on our automobiles at 90,000. Bus activity trips of 40,000. And as you can see, I'm down 261,000 for a total. And then for our equipment, I just listed, we've got 16 buses, nine we use on regular routes, two on special needs, three activity buses, and two that are slated to be sold. And then it shows our list of our various. So we have three minivans that are all on special needs routes, and one suburban that is, and five that's in the carpool. We have three snowplow trucks, and four utility vans at maintenance drives, a utility van for the van to pull the trailer. And we have three box vans, two that are for the kitchen, and one on maintenance. And two zero turnmowers and three utility tractors. And 90% of all the bus and equipment repairs are done in-house.
Is that counting the motor that was purchased?
Yes. And then this is just a little rundown of some of the names that we... The majority of all the groundwork is done by district employees. We send very little of that out. And on athletic fields, we've put down approximately 450 gallons of mixed paint over the year. And then all of our school heating and cooling systems can be controlled remotely with our air and ice laptops from home or whatever, if they're cold or hot or whatever. And our maintenance crew completes the majority of all HVAC, electrical, plumbing, carpentry, and general repairs. All of our school cleaning supplies, we're converting to all green cleaning. And we've been in the process for about two years. And then summertime, all the custodians, we go in two crews, and every room, the furniture's taken out. It's all cleaned. The rooms, the floors are waxed and all of that. And then there's another list that's not on here that there and that are a few projects that were done during the last four years. They're very figures if you wanna see them.
I was gonna say, I remember when I was teaching, it was always so nice to come back in the fall. How nice you were. Low run, you look so nice. And then there's the spring when they all leave. Such, such a contrast. You have a lot to oversee, don't you, Alan?
We stay busy in this presentation. And our, and one thing I want to bring up on our special needs routes, that's our fastest growing. This fall, we have the possibility of having eight wheelchair bus routes.
Eight? And what do we have now?
We have about six between the preschool.
We may have two more.
Well, we have three positions on each bus, and we've altered the buses. So we'll either have to stagger, pick up the delivery times or schedules, or we might end up having to find another method to haul a couple of them.
Can the school bus company alter those to hold one?
Well, I called the state to see, and they said that the VIN number has, it has to match. The VIN has to match, and they can't be altered.
Because they're maybe older buses or...
No, they're newer buses. You just can't alter them. What it's made for from the factory is how it has to sound.
Do you think we can send it back to the factory?
I don't think either one of ours would be helpful.
Well, if we do that, possibly. I'm gonna say your schedule is...
I, I do realize that 90%, that's 90% of the maintenance is done by me and in-house.
By me and I have it.
Yeah, you wait, I know, not you, but you personally.
Yeah.
Now, is that material over there? Because some of us don't have it in our...
Yeah, I put one of each.
If you have it?
Yeah, we all have it.
Oh, there's mine. Sorry. It's good to have this information. And you know, so many times constituents ask questions about, well, you know, how many buses do we have on here? Maybe just bring yourself down. Without having to call and bother you.
That's okay. So you aren't gonna ask for any extra money like Brad?
No, I'll get around to that.
Maybe you have enough to drive a check for him.
And what's this last page here?
That is just some of the projects we've done in the building. Eric, Aaron, and this...
Oh, Eric's going, oh.
That, that'll just put it in there.
Well, I'm glad you did.
The bus, you said the, he wrote turn, turnbowl within there. Is there a bus in there, or will that come off?
No, that'll come off after. It's my turn.
Are you gonna need a new bus for the handicapped then? Trade one?
One of ours is quarter of the age.
So you're looking at that.
Well, and, but it's, it's still got a lot of good, you know, we put a new lift in it this year. You know, maybe a mini bus. I, I just don't know. We, it's, sometimes we have higher numbers and it don't, you know, the kids may not go where, but it doesn't right now looks like it would be.
And you would have a driver for that? If that occurred, would we need another driver for that? We would maybe have enough in that bus. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. This is quite a list at last page. I appreciate this information in your report. The next item on the agenda is old business. Do we have a...
It is old business.
Yes. When I looked at that, I was trying to think. There was something. You know what I meant to ask. Alan, I did mean to ask you something about, we have this new man, this advisor consultant who's been working on us about safety and so forth. I assume he's been working with your department too.
Yes, Mark, both departments.
Both departments, uh-huh. Do you think, has, you, has this been a help?
Yeah. Yeah, he pointed out several things that we, you know, we don't notice, we, every day, and just...
Does, some of these things he's finding, does it include an expenditure or stuff to correct in any case? We haven't heard much lately about how that's going. So he comes every month, correct?
Yep, and I usually try to forward you the emails he sends. I just haven't gotten him most recent one.
Okay, but he is here monthly, makes a report. All right, thank you.
Does he report his last monthly, or does he just do a, like a quarterly report?
No, monthly. He sends it to me, and then I usually forward it to the board.
And don't you meet also?
We have a safety committee, correct? That meets different time than when he comes because of scheduling. But yeah, we do meet monthly on that.
And you discuss though?
We discuss, yeah, issues that employees are now looking at in terms of things that they are now noticing because we're kind of making it aware of everybody that we're looking for things that we can do to improve safety everywhere, so.
Like duct tape on the floor for that.
Yep. Kirk.
Yes.
I want to say you gentlemen, do not feel you need to stay through the whole meeting. You made your report. If you were to go home, I...
Don't have to say that to him.
Don't, I, thank the rest of the wish I made. Thank you very much. So evidently, we have no old business. We move on to new business. And we have something very special on the agenda tonight. It's the Teacher of the Year Celebration. Who's going to, are you going to announce?
Where would you like me to?
My address.
I could.
Hand her up, yes. Remember Ryan O'Hanlon over here?
Yes. This is one of my former students. Yes. Well, Martha, as most of you guys know, has been, has been in our district for 20 years. And I do have a special relationship with her as I was one of her former students when I was in elementary school. And then she left us for Kiakup when I was in elementary and I was headed for middle school. So I get to speak from personal experience. Experienced at the beginning, I was super excited. She was very hardworking, extremely dedicated to all of us, and instilled that love of art and knowing that you could be a great artist even if you're actually terrible at it. She never even told you that, but it's awesome. So you felt like each time you got to go, you're like, oh my gosh, I'm this amazing artist. Like I said, most of us were not. She knows exactly what to do to bring out the creative side of each child while educating students on the history of her own art, which I also got to experience when I student taught under Martha before I started teaching in science. So here are some remarks from her current students. They say she helps students explore new areas of art and new techniques. She works individually with students. She continues to use new types of art to include more students, for example, getting the animation club started. She works on getting students organized for college visits and scholarships. She gives each student a chance and believes in them even when they don't believe in himself or herself, herself and pushes students to do their best. And then there were so many comments from parents and educators. I really had to narrow down otherwise we've been hurt till ten o'clock. So these are just a handful of the things. She's an advocate for any and all students. She gives students the opportunity to showcase their work and they in turn receive multiple awards and accolades for what they've accomplished. She is involved in multiple activities, um, the end act of the day, whether it was something at one of the elementary schools or when she's at the middle school or high school. So say for example, art club, assisting in obtaining money for math books at the high school, PBIS, animation club, invention convention, career day at the middle school. She is extremely kind and humble human being to make sure that each child is successful. She not only inspires students but staff as well. Students are able to blossom in her classroom and her passion for art can be seen throughout her students' work. So today is all about acknowledging Martha for being our New Teacher of the Year.
I would like to echo a lot of those things and just also acknowledge how, how much I've enjoyed getting to know Martha. She, uh, she cares a great deal about every one of her kids and spends an insane amount of time, um, whether it's preparing things for class, helping kids, um, make a decision, whatever it is. And I, I just, uh, enjoy every time I get to go in her room because kids have a choice. Um, they're excited about what they're doing and it's a, it's a true testament to her, um, her work ethic as a teacher. So I appreciate it greatly.
Thank you. I feel very lucky to be able to have a job that I love and to work with so many people from diverse backgrounds and, you know, different ability levels and, um, I'm talking about, but my students, uh, they just bring so much to me, um, every day. And I've got three of them in here, current students right now.
Brilliant.
And my coworker volunteer David, who's done so many wonderful things in my classroom these past few years.
I'm so glad you mentioned that because it's through you that we have these people who are in the animation club and like, and the, uh, grant and all that. How did you and David, David come to you? Was he a former student? How did this all come about? You and David?
He's a former student from middle school and when I had him in middle school. And then he came to me and he said he would like to volunteer, um, to work in the art classes. He wanted to provide, um, some opportunities, um, to the students that he didn't have when he was in high school. And he was fresh out of, uh, the animation program at SCC. He, um, came in and, you know, was excited and, you know, brought in all these, uh, ideas about free software and what you could do with kids. And, you know, worked really hard to get those things. We wrote a couple of grants that sent it all through, but we, we keep working to, you know, provide the kids. We have, there are so many kids that just starve for the kind of things that they do provide. Um, so we're very lucky to have him.
Well, we're, we're, we're very fortunate to have you and to have him and we're so pleased. What has come as a result of all of this? And I just expect it to continue to grow.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. We're grown enough that our art club is now, we're not taking one group to Chicago. We're taking two groups.
Wow. And when will you be going, right? Will you be going, Marla?
I don't know. It's on my calendar, but we're going on one, one day trip and then another for the juniors and seniors going overnight. We, we went two years ago and then last year we went to Des Moines and Cedar Rapids, but obviously, um, the kids work really hard. They raise the money.
It's such an important part of our curriculum. And thank you for all that you've done. This is an honor very much deserved. Congratulations, Martha, so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Jane?
Yes. Oh. Well, I think, I think I have something I haven't been told about.
Yes.
Well, we're here. Congratulations, Martha M. Twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, Kioka Community School District, Teacher of the Year. I'm so. I disagree with my duties. I just do not. Now, uh, we are going to look at the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen co-op sharing agreement with Central Lee for debate, individual events and large groups. But Mr. Campbell isn't here. Uh, I had some questions when, when we do this. Are there any fees involved or is there any money, uh, that goes into those departments as a result of us allowing them to come and participate in our program?
Yes, this one I don't think so.
I don't bill them for anything on this one.
Is there anything that we share by going out there with them that we don't have? I know they have an FAA program for you to, has, has that ever been?
Yeah, they do.
No, but we don't.
No, we don't share.
We don't share, that's right.
But they extended that to us.
Oh, I don't know.
Is, is there anything here that's new? Uh, have we done, been involved in debate before? I didn't know we had, we do competitive debate at the high school?
Speech.
Well, I know it, it is a division of speech that they compete in. They do have debates. I didn't, I didn't remem, wasn't aware that they had that at all. I, maybe that's the wrong term.
That's the whole umbrella for that.
Well, individual events, but I don't think we've had a debate team for many, many years. Because that involves a lot of work. It's a wonderful, wonderful, um, activity, but it's almost an entity by itself because it demands so much work on the part of the students and the coaches as well. So, um, I just wondered if maybe there was another word that we could check with, yeah, uh, in there rather than debate because there is no debate that we have.
I think it's included in the.
It's in the speech.
Well, I thought we just don't offer.
Okay, okay. But we do have individual events. We do have large groups and all of that. So this is something we've been doing before and we're, we're just.
I'm not sure how many students are all over.
Yes, I was wondering about that.
Usually about two or three come from there.
Does it include the SCC speech class?
No, they.
No, this is an extracurricular speech.
But they have come for speech class too because the, the students who are in Central Lee, they have come for their SCC speech class. Yeah. And they're very thankful that they were able to.
But this, but this is.
Recharge them, uh, of significant fees and then they're gonna do that.
Okay, but that's, that's separate.
That's separate, yeah.
Correct.
And you're not sure about the numbers?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
Two sisters.
Uh, if you, if, Mr. Campbell, you get those numbers if you let us know, just with a little.
Check it right on.
Thank you, thank you. So, we have to take action on this. So I need a, a motion. Um, we really, I jumped ahead of the discussion. I apologize. May I have a motion to approve, to approve the sharing agreement with Central Lee concerning, uh, speech?
So moved. Second.
Okay, you got that, Heidi?
Mm-hmm.
It's been moved and seconded. Before we vote, is there any more discussion? All right. Then all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Elementary student handbook approval. I went over all these handbooks today. I was really impressed. Um, I was, uh, so who's going to present elementary then? Mr. Negus and Mr. Hendrix?
I can just, I feel you're in the process a little bit. Um, Mr. Hendrix signed that at first and made some changes. Some of those are, including the changes that you and the board already approved, the three health policies are there. Um, and after we made the updates, going back to our building leadership teams, which are representative of the whole school and shared with them, asked them to their input, their feedback, made a few changes and that's the product that we've seen. We really wanted to make an effort to have the same, um, handbook, recognizing the little differences, but it's still elementary. So, um, we're consistent.
I was wondering, after having looked at the middle school handbook, if there would be any, has any thought been given or would it be a plus or a minus? In the middle school book, there, uh, there is a listing of, of faculty and staff. And I just think from a parent's perspective, that might be a helpful addition. Now you have to have two, the, the Hall floor would have one listing and, and George Washington another. So that's just a suggestion I'm throwing out. I think it's helpful for parents.
I think it's a good suggestion. And after that, Jeremy, I already talked about, there might be a couple differences as far as PBIS information. Um, we're, we're not much far apart on PBIS and Mike, Mike did a great job sharing stuff like this. So we might add some additional things which might cause the handbook to be slightly changed in that.
What, what do you think about listing the staff?
I think, I think it's a great idea. I mean, we've got to get everything into place and complete so that before we send it printed, it's definitely something that we'd add to it.
Now we're looking at, uh, elementary now, so.
We made, we made little changes as far as adjusting dates, do some bigger changes like the health policies, um, just a couple additions on field trips. There were some things, some teacher input on field trips and class parties that they would like to see in the handbook, so carefree, et cetera, understanding.
I always read, read the section about control of headlights because we, that changes over the years. The wording, I think we had enough data changed this year.
You all, you all are in on that policy. You may be consistent on this stage. I would make a motion that we approve the elementary handbook. And if they want to add to that, they have to do it pretty quick to get it through the printer and the mouse or whatever they come up with.
That would be, may I have a second?
Nice, thank you.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the elementary handbook. On favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. So now we move on to the next one, which will be the middle school handbook. And I believe you're the spokesperson for that. This looks very good. Ooh, a brag? I don't know. Your name, your name is here. But either one of you.
Yeah, uh, promotion policy, a couple of our differences.
Wait a second.
What?
We want everybody to come up.
We want people to know who's talking.
Uh, Mr. Negus, do you two want to come up to, to re- live that?
He's got a, he presses on you officially.
Sure. When the public hears your voice, they may not know your face. But I guess it's the elementary level.
Absolutely. All right. So had a couple slight changes, uh, to the handbook this year. Uh, one thing we looked at was our promotion policy. Um, before it gave a overall average of all the courses combined. And one thing that we wanted to include was map testing, state testing, classroom assessments, intervention data and our student assistant team data. So we wanted to give, uh, more of, uh, feedback from several sources besides just looking at an average in general. Um, so that was one slight change. The other one is driving to school. Uh, students are not allowed to drive a personal vehicle. So we wanted to, we're okay with them having mopeds, but in case we had students of an older age, we didn't want to include automobiles as far as our parking lots and stuff and different things like that. Um, third was our amendment to the KMS, um, which was approved this year for our attendance and our minors. Um, it was just, uh, added escalating consequences for our PBIS initiatives. Uh, so it included recovery room, our minors and our attendance. We have seen wonderful data as the year's gone on this year with, with our changes so far. Um, we really have seen a great change, um, overall with our data that we've shared monthly with you guys. And it's just been, uh, about fifty, sixty percent reduction in the amount of referrals we've had. So it's been, it's been a great year. Um, and then this summer, last summer, we went with our PBIS team and we wanted to create a mission, a mission statement that was concise and varied to the point. Um, so we came up with this mission statement and it's, KMS provides a positive culture and learning environment that empowers personal success. So we wanted one line so everyone knew exactly where our mission statement was. Um, then our building leadership team took that on and, and we talked about it and they approved it. So we added that to the handbook as well. Do you have any questions for me?
Is the mission statement, um, also seen in, around the school classrooms, the same thing? So that is, uh, that would be very visible?
I agree. I agree. So we definitely need to look at adding some signs and different things to really promote our mission statement because that was the main objective is that everyone knows it. And, um, we just, we just love the fact that it empowers personal success. We think that's, um, exactly what we're driving for. So, um, but we will definitely do that. And some things we may look at with PTO too, as far as getting signs and different things in the future. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How could he go with that? Uh, when he decides not going to me on that ticket?
I, I am so sorry. I must have magnetic hands or something. I don't know. Um, no, Carla Bebar won our Vegas trip and we were so excited for it. It, you know, couldn't have been a, but, well.
Do I say that?
You have the ding of that.
We sold all four hundred and fifty tickets though, um, and raised four thousand dollars. And so that's all going into the count. And I'll talk about a few things we're gonna do with that later. So, um, we, we meet monthly though. Um, we have one April twenty eighth by fifteen.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I thought this looked very good. Did you all?
Oh, yeah.
I enjoyed going, going through it because you really have a much better idea and you can better answer questions. So, now we've got to, we have to approve these each individuals. May I have a motion to approve the middle school handbook?
So moved.
And, okay, yeah.
You go.
Moved and jammed. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. The motion carries. And now we're ready for Mr. Weigel and the high school. Each book gets thicker. Did you notice that?
Yes.
Each book.
I'm trying to change that. Uh, this year we really don't have a ton of big changes. I just wanted to point out, um, a couple. And then if you have questions in regards to any of the other ones, fire away. Um, a big one was we inserted the policy that we currently started this year that was approved, you know, at the end of, um, the summer in regards to our weekly eligibility. So inserted on page, I think, number thirty-five, um, begin the third week, week semester and every week thereafter, academic eligibility for participation in those extracurricular and co-curricular activities, um, will be determined by the grade for the current semester's work. So it goes on to kind of explain a little more in detail. But that was, um, a big one that is new to the handbook. It was approved, like I said, last year, but, uh, it's in there now. So, uh, we really haven't had too many issues with it. Um, just some things here that we had, have, have had to tweak off and on. Another one, uh, I would say a fairly big addition is on page forty-one, student activity travel. We inserted, the students are, who are academically ineligible will not be allowed to leave school early to, to travel and accompany their group or team to any event, performance or competition. So, um, we're not gonna pull them out of school to failing classes to go participate in, in events. Uh, we want them to stay in class. The opportunity to travel on special school trips. So these would be like, you know, your big, um, show choir, uh, trip to, to Kansas City could be the, the, the band's going down to, you know, Orlando. Um, really is gonna be at the distribution of administration for those students who are currently serving a suspension for either violation in regards to if they are gonna be able to go or not, or not. Because a lot of times pay starts for those way early. So, um, they might be at a spot where they get in trouble or now they're, they really made a poor choice and they've already spent, you know, five or six hundred dollars on these trips. Um, we, we still believe that they should not go if they've violated those good conduct rules. Um, so finding a way to make sure that we, uh, compensate people and do things that way. But ultimately it's gonna, it's gonna be a case by case basis based on, on really what happened. So, um, that's another big addition, I would say. Um, what else? We, we shored up a little bit the good conduct violations, um, just making it a little bit more streamlined. There was, uh, a change with category two activities. Um, we really are gonna load up everything into category two except for one of them. Um, and that was, I think, show choir. We moved up to category one. If you look at like the violations, um, for the first violation in category two, there, the penalty was the student shall be withdrawn from competition. That's it. End of story. So, how long? I mean, one, one competition, competition and some of, like, let's say it was a, you know, an event that they only have one thing and they were done. And I, I just, I don't know. I don't think that's the right thing to do. So, um, how that looks now is, is a little bit different than it was before. I just think it's gonna alleviate some of those gray areas that just really don't make sense. And we think we had a couple of those. This is the first year we had a couple of them that really we had to kind of work through to make sure that we were, um, not only following the code of conduct, but doing what was best for the, the students. So I think what we've got in place now, um, should alleviate some of those things. Like I said, it's not, there's always gonna be something that comes up that will allow us to make a decision. It's gonna be best for, for the student, but I think this will be better.
Case by case on that also.
There's always gonna be something where a kid's involved in second team things and there's gonna be violations that are different for this or that depending on first, first, second or third violation. So, um, what else? I think really, all, other than that, it's just little, little things, um, things that weren't accurate. Um, this goes through activities, guidance, us, um, and we get input when we need it from other people that affects like the media center. Um, if there's, we had some changes in there because currently. like the media center. We had some changes in there because currently what was in our handbook wasn't accurate, an accurate reflection of our IMC, so.
Now, who works on that? You and Heather?
Oh, it's me, Heather, Mr. Jones, Mr. Campbell, Mr. Went, Mr. Carter. Like I said, we had this year maybe one or two teachers that we had questions about. Lori Long in IMC, some questions for her. So as questions come up, we kind of ask. When I first got here, we kind of overhauled it pretty intensely that first year, but now it's, this is a little change here. So that's the handbook.
Okay, I'm going to ask on page ten, and probably it's the same as that as before.
Yep.
But over the years, there's an area that sometimes raises questions.
Yes.
It's the PE waiver.
Yep.
The PE waivers of any kind will not be offered to any incoming freshman or sophomore. Is that the current?
That's the current practice, but if you keep reading.
Yes, it is.
It was a counter, kind of, PE waivers will still be considered for those with a full academic course load not including PE. They need verification from counselor and from administrators.
But is that just for juniors and seniors, is the way I interpreted? Maybe I'm wrong.
Correct, but there's still going to be some kids that, based on their interest and what they're doing, they still might not be able to have.
Well, that's what I wondered, because there's situations.
Yes, there are. Like I said, we're going to do what's best for every kid.
I'm willing to hear that.
We're going to offer, hopefully, an early bird section two now, so if kids want to do that. Because we've had kids that wanted to be in this PE class, but that'd be just, they just couldn't based on their course load. And right now, freshmen have so many classes, if they're involved in, you know, instrumental music and vocal music, that they really don't have a whole lot of choice, which isn't awesome, but yeah.
If they are an athlete, and they have a full academic load, can they be in some of them?
I don't like to do that, no. It's a pretty big.
My concern is, though, coming home at eleven o'clock, twelve o'clock at night, and then having to get up for early bird is a consideration.
I know, it's early. I think our, yeah, I understand.
I have some.
Yes.
Questions?
Yes.
Page number sixty-eight, I believe.
Sixty-eight?
Yes. AP online courses, I think I have said this again.
Yeah.
AP chemistry, who would be conducting the lab for that?
So, yeah, so like Mrs. St. John, depending on how many students we have, I don't honestly know. I don't think we have any kids right now in AP chemistry that I'm aware of. If we offer it, that's something we want to figure out. Do I have a plan right now? No. I think if we have kids that are, want to take that and need to take it, then we want to figure something out. But we haven't, we don't do anything with it right now that I'm aware of.
Because when even the bell and blank online chemistry class that you have mentioned on another page here, that is very intense, and we can, the student cannot wait for the lab, for someone to find, somebody to overlook that, because that has happened, and children have to drop out. It's very intense.
Is that in the handbook or is that in the?
Well, we're talking about two different documents. Yeah, we were. Right now, we were going on this one. What you're talking about is the second document.
Second document, okay, yeah.
But to answer your question, no, we don't have somebody identified right now.
But I have some more in from this, so later.
Well, when we're approving. Yeah, because there are two separate, two separate ones.
Two separate things, correct.
Okay, so we need to refocus our attention just on this one that we've gone over. Are there any other questions? I mean, the listings of the clubs in this, I think we are very, very fortunate. We know all that Mrs. Neff offers, the art, and you look in this, it was very impressive, I think. Can these, are these online?
Oh, yeah, this whole thing is online. And honestly, I'm not going to spend as much money as I had on these in the past. Our freshman house are all going to use them, but upperclassmen are going to have the option, because half of them really help use them. The information is available and, you know, what technology is.
Do you connect? Should you get many, I bet you do, with parents called by something, and they have never looked at this?
Correct, yep. And I send out power announcements every year too, and try to communicate where things are at. Send out surveys in regards to like power school usage, what you understand, where you don't.
We're all guilty of that.
Well, and I think too, just having something for parents to come to and kind of see, so they know where stuff's at. Kids are the same way. I mean, they don't know that it's there, because people are so used to just giddy, you know, giddy the information is, they're going out and finding it. Not that that's a bad.
Well, I had some misconceptions about some things myself until I read through this in detail. And I was very pleased to, and you presented these to us before. But there's always some changes and, and maybe some additions and so forth. But it takes some time to get this together?
It does.
Well, I think, I couldn't see this being, it reflects that. It really does. Any questions before we move to accept? Now, we'll go to this other one in there.
Yeah, but this is still there.
Okay.
I think one of the clubs or classes was the yearbook. And.
Yes.
One of the yearbooks that has come out, which is almost past due six months. I think when we do these clubs, we need to bring out quality, and because we are promoting our school. We are, and it should be a balanced yearbook. And the one that we have, two thousand and fifteen, is nowhere near that. There is not one thing on academics here, and there is not one thing on the, it start to finish its activities all the way through, which is fine at some part, but I feel that we should have a balanced yearbook. There are lots of mistakes in it, and it's just not complete. And there are many persons who have approached us regarding this. We are paying fifty-four dollars. They're charging fifty-four dollars, and I just don't think.
Have you talked to the person that's in charge of that yet?
I was attempting to, and I was trying to talk to you also, but I got an email that said that I could not meet the deal. And that, I think, is not correct as a board member, or as any teacher or a parent would like to meet with the principal. I think we should have the opportunity.
I meet with the teacher first, or the sponsor, or whatever it is, or the coach. I'm not going to ever talk to somebody until they've done that, and then I'm happy, more than happy to discuss anything in regards.
So you're not going, that's customer service for any parent coming in.
Yeah.
To the book. That's very interesting to know for us, because we, as board members, have met many of our administrators, and we have always had the opportunity to at least visit with them. And I think that is incorrect. Also, the homecoming queen candidates in the past issues have always, and the court has always been included. That has not been done. And for what reason? We don't know.
We don't?
I'm asking because of it.
Excuse me, was this an injury late this year coming?
Oh, yeah.
Eight months.
Why was that? I don't know much about.
Yeah, so a bunch of files were lost on a computer, tons of pictures, and it's been, I mean, since probably September that they, basically started over what had, what happened. And so the class has been working on this year's book, even though the prior years wasn't finished. So it was a complete.
So what are we going to do about it? Is there anything that can be added in, or are the parents just, this is something the children have as a memory book. There are children whose paintings have been put in Washington DC. What an honor. Students who have traveled internationally, they are representing our school. They are international, they're in Germany and other places. Ryla, or all other activities, it should have been a balanced system. There are students going for science fair, National History Day. You are excluding everything.
I don't think it's excluded. It sounds like it's lost. It was lost.
Lost, you know, when you bring it out and you sell it at fifty-four dollars, I think you've got eight months that you have taken to do this, revise this. Those are excuses that I cannot. As a board member, we are promoting, we are asking why we are having enrollment out, and this and that. The little things matter, and I think whoever's on the committee should make it a quality product when you're bringing it out.
Zach, you have a chance.
We probably need to meet that committee.
Is there an oversight committee other than the sponsor and the students have put it together? Is there someone else that sees this?
It's before it goes out?
Yeah.
There's, it's the editor, the student editor, and then the sponsor. That's it.
That's it?
Yep.
And these were lost? You don't know why or how these files were lost?
Everything on the computer was gone, and Kirk worked really hard to try to get as much back. There's a laptop, and then there's some desktops that are used for the kind of production of this.
And, sorry.
Did you have any ideas or suggestions yourself so that you won't have this problem in the future?
Yes.
And that's the main reason I'm bringing this out, because we should not, no student should be affected like this. This is their memory book, and if they're taking part in great events, it should not be like this.
Well, I think we all acknowledge that that is not up to the standard that we would normally like to have. And I think Zach is well aware.
Absolutely.
Of this situation, and you have some ideas to see to it that there's not, not a repeat. It's unfortunate.
Alka, I don't appreciate the way that you go about doing that. It's just, it's not professional.
Really, and sending me an email is not professional, the way you said it. I don't want to discuss this or create a drama here.
I think it would be more effective if you two could get together a one-on-one.
Absolutely.
After she talks with the sponsor. Yep.
Or we can talk, all three of us together. And there are other parents who want to come and speak.
Some of them have talked to me already, and I told them to talk with the sponsor, and then they did, and then they would come talk to me.
We'll all come together.
Okay, and maybe eventually I could get a report on all this, if they came, they had a consensus. Thank you. Now, are we ready to vote on this first document?
I make a motion we approve the high school handbook, as presented.
Thank you. I think she was just a little faster over there. The motion's on the floor. Debate seconded to approve the high school handbook.
One more thing was, the connections has not been included.
Is it not in here at all?
I didn't see it. I might have missed it. I just wanted to check with anyone, because volunteer or this thing is.
Check for silver cord. I bet you it's called that. Silver cord?
Silver cord.
And that's a really good group.
That's a very good group.
There was a picture in the paper tonight, and I couldn't, were they middle school? Or what age were they? Different volunteers from the school district.
Yeah, that's a middle school. They take down the ministry signs.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
So nice.
I think Laura Moender is in charge of that group.
It looked like probably the age was middle school, but it was a different name.
Interact Club.
It wasn't connections. It was something else.
K, is it K Connections, what they do on Mondays after school?
No, it's Interact Club sponsored by Road Training.
Well, I think.
I don't see it in the handbook.
Yeah, there it is.
So you might want to make a note then to add, that's something that should be in there. So the motion will also, will be assumed that that will be corrected. Alright, the motion is to approve. May I have all those in favor of the motion signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same side. The motion passes. Now, we go to this next doc, which I found very interesting. So I suppo, all the people, well, I didn't have any input here, but Mr. Went probably worked on it, Mr. Carter, Mr. Weigle, Heather.
And really, it's the department. So again, last year.
The guidance department primarily?
They're the ones that create the whole thing.
Okay.
But the specific course descriptions within each area is created by the department. So last year, there were not, there were not a whole lot of changes, and this year, there really aren't too many other than some wording things with art, and we kind of see some of those. Also, wanted to offer a graphic arts class, something that was, was new and different. I'm not sure. I think we probably had four or five kids maybe sign up for that at the most.
Are we going to believe we do it?
I don't know. We'll have to, I give, once we get all the numbers, and I give them back to the teachers, and then that's how they kind of look at creating their ideal schedule, what they think is going to be best for the kids. And then it comes back to us, the guidance and me, and then we kind of create that bigger master schedule based on all the different ideas from our staff. So math, there was a change, that new, that new course, that foundations of personal finance. I think so far, we have about twenty-three kids that, students and seniors that are taking that. Remember, it's not going to be required yet. We're kind of piloting this, this class next year. Ideally, it would be kind of the opposite semester of government, which is required for seniors. So if this was that other semester class that was required, then it would kind of offset, they'd have a year-long requirement. One would be government, one would be this personal finance class. And again, that class could be taught by either a math teacher or a business teacher. And then whichever teaches it, that's the kind of credit they get, so.
And are the kids that are taking it needing a math credit?
Most of these kids don't, because you only need six math credits to graduate high school. So most of them finished those six, their ninth, tenth, and eleventh grade year. So this is like a seventh elective. So that was, that was a change, just some wording things in Algebra I, and then that, like I said, the art. But I think really, other than that, there weren't too many differences, descriptions. With some of our special ed classes, those, I think you got some of those, but we probably won't be able to offer some of those now that we don't have our transition coordinator, at least one of them. But that's, a lot of those skills are in all of their classes already, so, yeah.
I like a feature, which you probably had before, but with the list, all the possible fields you know. I think that's very helpful.
Do we use that in our homeroom with our students? Now, again, does it sink in? You know, I don't know. When we meet with all the kids, we always go through that and identify what it is they.
I like this for both parents, and this is online too?
Yep, absolutely.
For both parents and the young people see, because there's such a variety. And that to me was just very, very impressive. And then what would you need if you wanted? I like this. I like the way it's set up. I like what it's made out.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, that's been that way for a while, I think.
I guess I have to look at this closely.
So those are the only changes, and then I know, Alka, you had some questions about things that.
Yes, you had a question.
Yeah, I was, you know, this on page number two, is it? There is this where the booklet has been developed as a key component to our career development program.
Okay.
In that where, I mean, it's a great thing that you all are doing.
What page is it?
Two, front page.
Front page.
Yes, yes, yes.
And I was just wondering whether, I wish the student representatives were here today, because it would be nice to get what, get their input as well on how they look at it, like, what are their choices? Because there could be some students, you know, who have not yet decided.
Oh, absolutely.
What they want to choose as their, when they go to whichever track they go into. So how do you, how do you monitor that? How do you?
So, yeah, actually, one of the neat things that was just offered this year through our AEA, we don't have the report back yet, but it had to do with kind of post-high school plans. And so they spent a ton of time looking at our kids that went on to four-year schools, our kids that went on to two-year schools, kids that went on to nothing, to figure out if they've been successful, why they haven't been successful, why they haven't. I haven't met with them yet, and I have to sit down with the AEA reps to get that report back. But it's all, it's all based on career, school, technical education plans after high school. But current, you know, the current students that we have, I think the big thing for them is really allowing them, or giving them the option to take classes in things that, you know, they maybe otherwise wouldn't even think to take. Getting them exposed to those things, so they do then, maybe by the time they're senior in high school, have a plan to do something that's going to be productive, you know, not only for themselves, but for hopefully society ultimately. It just, it's hard for some kids too, because so much of what they have to worry about or deal with outside of school takes away from a lot of, of school. So that, that's hard, I think, for them too. But I do think there's a lot of people in place that can help, help them understand what it is they're good at and what they can, I mean, you know, like Mrs. Neff, there, some of the stuff that she's been able to do with kids. You know, the hard work that a lot of different teachers, guidance counselors, administrators, whoever put in. Alka answered your question.
Will they get the opportunity of trying out some of these courses, like free, this thing a little, like, you know, go and attend one or two days of these, were any chance?
So ultimately, how it sits in right now in our handbook, they can, you know, they select classes. They get a week, basically, to justify if it's something that has an elective, if they want to be a part of it, without, you know, any consequence or, you know, ramifications, they can jump out of that into something else. And then also, I mean, we make decisions, again, based on what's in the best interest of the student. If they're a month in, and they figure out, wow, this is not for me, we're not going to, just, you know, it's in the handbook, you're going to get an F no matter what. That's not what we're going to do. I think there's definitely cases when that, when that's the right thing to do, but we ultimately still make decisions that are going to be in the best interest of the kid.
And you did some of that with your Christmas, your K term?
The K term, yeah, yes. That was much more kind of eclectic, maybe real-world, things outside of a traditional school. So that was, that was based on teacher passion, though that was, that really wasn't student passion. So I think as we look to plan something similar to that, people bring in. So I think as we look to plan something similar to that, we'll bring in some of the student passion too, so then we can have teachers identify with that. So then it will be a kind of a collective group effort to produce something based on that passion. Does that make sense?
What do our students here, there are some students here think about this?
You like it?
You like that? Great. And the last one was the history, this thing on page forty-eight.
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 Yep.
I just, the last line, I just felt everything was so very well, this in-depth, you know?
Yeah.
The same, suddenly a little, I wish there was a little more to it. Like just a survey of American social, political, economic.
Well, now, you can get your teachers probably.
They do, yeah. But what I could add, we could come up with something a little bit more.
A little more, so that it's clearer from which period to period, what does it entail? Yeah, both of them should be. The industrial tech, that is excellent.
Why have you been quiet tonight, Russell?
No, he's not. He's over there. I can hear him whispering.
Oh. I wish I could go back and take some of those classes that weren't available to me when I went to school.
Oh, yeah, one other thing, Alka, was with AP chemistry.
Yeah, yeah, AP online chemistry, that's a.
Can I help clarify that?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
My wife's going to be mad if I didn't help clarify that.
Yeah, sure.
So here's the thing, so basically what happens is if there's a kid that's talking about wanting to do AP Chem or AP History or whatever, she collaborates with a teacher as a mentor of that student, because obviously she's just the middle man between the kid and the content and all of that. So this would be no different than AP chemistry. We're not going to kid turn, we're not going to turn a kid loose into the lab without proper supervision and all of that. So I want to make sure it be clear that they would have a teacher identified as the mentor person to work with labs and all of that to coincide with the AP online piece. There would be, there would be some supervision and all of that. We're not just going to turn somebody else, somebody loose into the lab. So that's, and AP chemistry would be one of those tough ones to automate. So that's one of those things, that there would be a plan in place. So when he says there's no plan, because we haven't had a kid interest, however, if a kid demonstrated interest, then we would have to come up with a plan on how we're going to serve those needs. But we're not going to do, we're not, you alluded to safety concerns and all that. We're not going to turn a kid loose into the lab without supervision or anything like that. I just wanted to be clear that up.
Yeah, but I think, has anyone filled in that position yet for gifted and talented, the program?
Still, yeah, still in the process.
It's still in the process, okay. I'll, we'll address that then.
But obviously, that will be a conversation between whoever's facilitating the program and being teachers to mentor kids and all of that. Because the AP part becomes tough.
What happened in the past was there was no teacher.
Communication upfront?
No, there were no gifted and talented teachers. And then the child did the AP chemistry class. She requested the class teacher who was teaching chemistry to mentor or just watch her. He refused, and it is up to the teacher whether he wants to mentor or not. So we ran into that situation and the child had to.
Ways to avoid that.
Yeah, that's, I want to protect that the child taking that class should be able to take it.
And I'm not going to speak for her, but I know she wouldn't start a program that wasn't properly supervised. She wouldn't.
Yeah.
The building folks, they're not going to create that situation. So I just wanted to be clear to make sure that that was understood.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments on this rather lengthy, which it is, because everything at senior high there is offered. I think it's a good guide. It's a really good guide for people sitting down about. Now, oh, when, have they all raised up their schedules for next year?
So all the requests are done, so that's what generates those numbers that we give to departments then.
When will they be doing that?
The students are done. The departments already have the numbers. They are due back to me by Friday and then we spend prom night basically creating our master schedule.
That's what you do.
Prom night, yeah.
We're really sharp.
So you don't have to go off limits. That's, that's an interesting point.
It's a good, it's just, instead of just sitting there, we're trying to.
Make productive, that's good.
Oh, you think you're chaperoning?
Oh, yes.
You're chaperoning?
Yeah, yeah, it's after prom, after prom.
Oh, it's after.
So it's at our middle of the year.
That's a very, a use of time.
Is the hypnotist coming this time?
I beg your pardon?
The hypnotist?
Oh, well, I know.
I want to question who's that?
Okay.
I move we accept this.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Has been moved and seconded that we accept the, this booklet. And all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Oppose, same sign, the motion passes. Thank you very much, Mr. Weigle, for going over all of this and answering our questions.
You bet.
So gee, sharing agreement with Harmony, Mr. Hood, we have three people.
I would like for the board to approve Reva Terry, Leo Clark, and Kelsey Whitaker to be shared with Harmony for next year, all fifty percent of Harmony and fifty percent of that.
And we hold the contract on Reva.
Correct.
And they hold the contract, or Mr. Clark and Ms. Whitaker, because, okay. And Ms. Whitaker is, okay, Mr. Clark is elementary art. And Reva does music there. Do we know?
You'll be doing music here too, is that correct, Chris?
Yeah, yep.
Hopefully evaluated by the district that holds the contract.
Yes, yep.
We try and leave both of them.
Okay, so they're evaluated by the school district. So then who is, then the, one of the middle school administrators would be evaluating Reva?
I think she just was last year.
Okay. Oh, it's, it's a three-year, yeah. It's still in effect. Any questions? We, well, first of all, let's have a motion to approve the sharing agreement with Harmony. I have a motion. Okay, she moved and we'll have to say Kim seconded. But there might be some questions about, but we've been doing this often, we've been doing this for a number of years. There are not as many people involved and it's on to a lesser degree now than it used to. Can you say how much, financially, how much we realized from last year from this to our advantage?
Yep, that will get funded for this year, that will get funded next year. It was, it was an additional thirty-six kids, which was a little over two hundred thousand dollars.
That was from?
That's what will get funded next year. So it's for the fifteen sixteen, yep, with the additional waiting for fifteen sixteen, that will be funded in next year's funding.
I didn't realize it was that much. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, the motion passes. And now, Mr. Hood, we have to look again at budget reduction plan adjustment.
Yep, I would like for the board to approve, excuse me, reducing Hawthorne Special Ed position level one and then we'll be adding Hawthorne level three teacher.
Well, I'll take the motion first because we might have some discussion on that. May I have a motion to approve this adjustment?
Certainly.
Gary News?
Second.
Russ, second? Okay, so the motion can be seconded. Are there some questions about the updated or the adjustment that presented by Mr. Hood tonight from anybody? It's just the area special ed?
Correct.
Yeah.
Because you already approved the rest.
Yes, that's what I thought.
I personally struggled with this and I came and spent a couple hours with Cory talking to him about it and I struggled with it.
Okay, I think you'd expressed that concern to me. It had to do with some of the figures, the numbers. Do you have any recommendation for moving forward to, in this area when we're looking at this in the future? Because obviously, it was a little bit of a discrepancy with some numbers.
Yeah, and it happened later. It should have happened with all the other timing that went down and it's just, you know, it'd be great, what the point is, is to divide the severe and profound in the autistic program into two separate programs. And if we become a hub for autistic programs and people open and roll in, that would be awesome. But if it doesn't happen, then we have two teachers with eight kids with probably eight associates.
Eight?
Each, well, three of them have their own nurses, the other five will each have an associate. And it's, it's a lot of adult-to-student ratio.
So we will need to.
And, you know, we've had a spend deficit problem.
Yes.
So I, I just.
Do you think we're going to add to the autism numbers?
We sure could, because is it Fort Madison that's cutting there?
Yeah, they're looking at making some changes.
So they may get some kids there.
Does Central Lee have an autism program?
I don't believe so.
Okay, so Central Lee doesn't have a program, Fort Madison's cutting theirs.
And it doesn't mean these schools aren't serving kids, and I want to be clear, I want to make, it doesn't mean they're not serving kids with autism, but they're not necessarily running a program targeted towards social skills. Like, they're leading IDP goals, but they're not running like a program per se. So I don't want to say that they're not serving kids with autism, that wouldn't be fair.
We probably have consultants through ADA that works.
Say that again.
Probably consultants through ADA that would come and work with individual teachers and that, what you're referring to.
Well, they'll have that program, but it won't be separate, like we have it now, but it's not separate.
Yeah, it won't be a targeted program for a particular group of students with autism.
Autism is on the rise. I think it's one in sixty-eight now, isn't that?
I don't know, it is on the rise.
It's terribly on the rise. It's very concerning.
As we do this, if we would probably refer to this, we will, we, this needs to be monitored and worked at closely to see what happens in the next year. I hadn't realized there would have to be that many individuals, associates involved.
Well, the associates involved, you can reassign within the building. And they did make some reductions. But I know one of those things was, when Jan and I first talked about it, was we had this, it's been the administrators had spent a lot of time on this and then it came back a couple of weeks later and and some of the teachers that had moves were concerned because some of those had already been built. So it was a timing issue as a separate item away from the programs themselves. And I understood what Cory was saying and I've talked with him before about leading IDPs and having a program. Just to make sure everybody else does and if they don't, they could, I'm sure they could contact Cory later or any of the other administrators, but.
So you're.
As far as, I understand the philosophy and going with that. I don't know that we are ready as far as a physical setup from building to building to building because it's not just a room that you need. You need the proper room and, and I know they know that and working toward that goal. And that's one of the things that facilities.
Yes, I was just going to say.
Can look at. I mean, some of them have mentioned, not that per se, but they have mentioned space issues. Which would add to a correct space issue because I think what, I'm going to put it in other terms, you can meet that IEP and you can meet it progressively and with a better plan, like a Cadillac plan, and that's one of the things they're looking at. But then also, and I didn't ask this question of any administrator, but I know that we had that budget reduction plan and then we had talked about reduction of associates. And Jan has mentioned that and knows that area better than I do about just making sure that we're having the best utilization of human capital that we can have, especially when we have a deficit.
So that's something we need to check on.
Is there anything you'd like to say to anyone else before we vote? All right, the motion's on the floor. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Jan abstained.
Uh, Jan abstained. Uh, the motion passes. Now we have the announcements, but we'll start with you, Mr. Henrys of George Washington and Torres.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you for stepping right up.
Sure.
Interesting.
Purple shirt.
First talk about Torrance Building. Parent-teacher conferences, we saw ninety-seven percent of the parents attending. And the three that didn't attend, I'll even have to double check to see if they followed up with a phone conference because that sometimes can be the best way for those parents who don't want to step in. Other than that, though, I like what the teachers in this building do. They do a lot of community things, get the word of community. They've taken kids to the library, introduced them to that, so hopefully this summer they'll frequent that with their parents. They've all taken separate visits to the hospital. Officer Johnson was in here talking to the kids about seatbelt safety, you know, and about how to approach policemen, because as you know, that's been a big issue in the news in the United States, just respect for policemen, understand what they do, so start them early, teach them well. And also, they, I think tomorrow, they've got a field trip that deals with conservation. Lee County Conservation has been in the schools, in this building, already talking to the kids and then now they're going to actually go out to a site and we hope we get good weather for that. The Igdees testing window just opened up for the, our kids in this building. And it'll be interesting after they finish the second round to see just how their scores compare, what growth that the kids make. Because the teachers had some concerns that what Igdees was asking the test wasn't necessarily things that they were hitting on. So they've worked with some ADA consultants, early childhood, to best figure out where can they make little changes to meet the needs. Because if we're going to use the Igdees scores to improve teacher instruction, obviously, we've got to make that effort to make sure we're teaching those things. So meshing that with the goal and the quality program for preschools in the state of Iowa, we've just got to make sure it all comes together as new things come in. Okay? That's it, Torrance Building. George Washington, ninety-six point one percent attendance to conferences. Four different teachers at a hundred percent, so that's, that's a good thing. And again, we'll follow up to see if some phone conferences have been made, attempts to get people in, because sometimes you make all the attempts and well, they just don't want to come in for some reason. But I have confidence George Washington teachers will make those attempts as much as they can. Iowa assessments, we just finished last week and, or just finished, we're just finishing up, a few kids are finished up their test this week, but we should be ready to go by Cory's Thursday date. Great attendance. And we just started our power announcement and the next day, one kid was tardy by like five minutes and he was running into the school. We knew he was going to be late. So we really appreciate the parents' efforts in getting kids to school on time. And that's based on, I mean, a few more intense issues here and there, but far better than what we see in a normal situation, so. But we appreciate the kids, the teachers thought they, they really felt they were working the best they could. And that came a lot from the teachers being positive. Several teachers worked on scheduling special events for that week. Several teachers worked on collecting snacks and getting snacks ready organized out of classroom, just, just a little extra effort to make the kids know this is a special event. And I am very hopeful that we'll see some good stories and all of that. And I can't forget too, that's great teaching all year long too.
What's the turnaround time?
Excuse me?
What's the turnaround time to get the results back from those tests?
If we send them in Thursday, then two, three weeks?
We send them Thursday, the twenty, when we send them in Thursday, the twenty-first. I would imagine that we'll have some preliminary data back probably week and a half, two weeks. And then the big, because I get it on a disk and then we start playing on the Excel sheet. Because if we get an Excel sheet with about two thousand kids and data points and all that, then, then it gets put into the state website called Data Insight and it's the one that they're going to use us for. So I like that you look at both, that it's usually a couple half percentage off here and there, but we get that data about, we can have two weeks to start kind of figuring out and looking at how we do it.
Well, that's not bad. You, you keep reading articles about other testing in other places.
When we go to Florida Balance, it will be.
Uh, what, yes, what was Florida Balance?
I mean, we probably won't see it until fall, so. Yeah, we go to the new, we go to the next gen assessment pieces. Because there's items that are hand scored and all of that, it'll be a whole different model game.
Okay.
Yeah. Couple of things I want to quickly mention. Great thanks to Keegan Arts Center. I, that's the right name.
Arts Center.
Arts Center, okay. Three different events I talked about this year. This last one, the FOBOX thing, was really cool. They just brought in all kinds of recyclable items, cans, bottles, buttons, scrap. And there were probably eight people besides Mrs. O'Neill who came in and volunteered at the time and sat down with kids. They weren't sure if they could get each group through in forty minutes, but kids were walking off, big smiles on their faces, great little projects. Heard other people's, even our night in the Sony event, it was like, I don't know, make one of those for my grandkid this weekend. He needs to have your pictures of it, so I mean, it's really good.
She's one of our former art teachers.
Yes, yes, I totally agree with that, so. I was really impressed with the volunteer they were able to bring in and that's a great program. We're going to hopefully continue that relationship with them.
And they enjoyed it as much as the kids, they talked, I talked to them and they were saying, we had such a fun time at the school. They absolutely enjoyed the volunteers.
And our kids came through great. They were so excited about it, so engaged in it that there were no behavior problems, none. They liked it so much. Some other real quick things. This Saturday, we've got about seven or eight kids or so sign up for our bus, it's STEM Festival. That's in Burlington. And we have a grant. And, um, we have a grant that's gonna pay us back for the cost of that bus, so thanks from some burger, we've got that all lined up. Our K-Pride Assembly for April, is set for April twenty-ninth, one fifty, and I can invite you all there. Uh, this month, the associate teachers are picking a certain class for the K-Pride Award, the kid that they've seen, playground recess, and always doing, uh, showing good, uh, K-Pride. Uh, fourth grade concert, that's a little bit down the road, May tenth, I want to get that on you guys' calendar, that's a, uh, that's at the Grand Theater, seven o'clock, May tenth. And we all know Mrs. Dolph is on a great concert, so, if you can clear your countenance for that. And today, um, Mrs. Bottler came into the George Washington, and we had a little band preview, so she sat down with the fifth grade, they previewed the instruments, taught them about what they were, and the next three days they'll do some mouthpiece testing, hopefully recruiting for next year's middle school band.
What time is the Grand Theater?
Seven.
Seven?
And I'll, I'll keep giving updates on that, but it's May tenth, Tuesday night, seven o'clock.
Thank you. And, uh, let's see, Mr. Davis or Mr. Marston? We need another chair.
We do, let you return side by side, please.
Get a profile.
Before I forget the numbers, I just, I just reviewed them, parent teacher conference numbers, we had ninety-six percent in the fall, and then ninety-one percent in the spring, that's just how our data is looking down, fall and spring. Also, we've been really busy with Iowa Assessments as well, again, very good turnout, very good attendance, um, out of the school of five hundred and seventy kids, I'm really only tracking down about five to ten students to get their tests made up, so that's really, really positive. Mrs. Brooks, I just want to acknowledge her organized a really fun, creative assembly where Mr. Davis, uh, came over, and she created a bubble tunnel, so she had our staff line up in a tunnel and have little bubbles for it, because we were gonna blow the tops off of these tests. And the kids ran through the tunnel, and they blew bubbles, there was a bubble machine at the end, and the kids, every class got to go through. Very creative, very fun, and then Mr. Davis did a pep talk, and, um, got them all excited to take the test, so, thankful for her. Yeah, high school now, yes, yeah, girls' basketball, girl, yes, yes.
Oh, that Mr. Davis.
That Mr. Davis.
Oh, he has athletics.
Yeah, he's gotten pep done, psyched.
Well, I remember when I directed a, a variety show at middle school, and, uh, it was the Blues Brothers, and he played Jake.
Do we have it on tape at all?
I do, probably, I do someplace, it was Elwood and Jake, and he was Jake.
Yeah, we'll find that.
He was very good. I'm sorry, go.
No, it's fine, and the third thing I was gonna mention is our Title One movie night that is going to be on, um, this Friday night from five-thirty to eight o'clock, and it's open to, um, all of Hawthorne families, and we're just inviting the, the whole, um, school, families, students in. We're gonna watch a movie, and the movie will relate to a book that we gave away to the kids for free, free food, um, we're doing a power announcement, just announcing that, letting everybody know about it. So, just to encourage reading, that it can be fun, and, um, make it a, a fun and formal night for families.
Mr. Marston, why don't you?
I really only have one, uh, item to add to that, um, we got approached, uh, for a pretty cool opportunity next year, um, the Iowa Tier website that we have a lot of ours, what data on, um, they're looking to pilot a behavior part of that site, uh, and because of the work we've done with PBIS and the systems that we have in place, they felt like we had some, uh, good things in place to be a pilot school for that site next year, so it will be one of about twenty school districts, uh, or twenty schools, um, in the whole state that'll be piloting that next year. Um, so, looking forward to that opportunity to help kind of build that and turn it into something that's used whole state, uh, state law, so.
Happy camp out there.
That's great.
Did you go through this bubble business?
We were going, we were going bubbles.
Is there any video of that that we can show some?
Picture, special, picture and video, and one thing, if you're thinking about planning to blow bubbles in an assembly, be sure to use a tarpon or use the bubbles.
You could put that on, on the web, you could put it on the website, some of those teachers. All right, thank you, gentlemen, very much, and Mr. McCosker? McLauren?
All right, um, I want to thank Woody for all the organization with Iowa Assessments last week, we were well, he's just got a few kids for makeup tomorrow, outstanding communication with that. Um, and we're very hopeful that we see good results, we had a nice assembly that Friday before, um, to kick, kick it off, get kids excited about it, and make sure they knew the importance and how special it was, uh, for them to be able to show all the things they've learned, so. We hope that we get good results there, and we're, and we're thinking we will. Uh, we had parent teacher conferences, um, about a month ago, and we were at eighty percent attendance, um, as we expected to see, sixth grade was our highest percentage at eighty-four percent, seventh grade at seventy-seven, uh, eighth grade at seventy-four percent, so I know that that continues to go down as kids get older.
I think eighty's a great score, that's very good, yes.
Our, our teachers worked hard to get people in and communicate that out, and communicate well all the time, so I'm not surprised that it was at eighty, I thought it'd be a little bit higher, but we communicate often with them. Um, our eighth grade incentive trip is tomorrow, so, um, we're taking sixty-ish, sixty-plus kids to the Burlington Beach game tomorrow, weather dependent, we'll see how that goes. Um, but, uh, so they're excited for that. Uh, our MAP Assessment, Measure Academic Process Assessment opens up, uh, Monday for, uh, April twenty-fifth, and that'll run for a few weeks, that's our final, big assessment for the year where we get to measure growth of kids, to see if, uh, we're growing kids over the standards over the year, so we use that to kind of drive our PLC work for the next year. Teacher Appreciation Week is next, uh, excuse me, is May second through, uh, May sixth, and then, uh, Secretary Appreciation Day or Administrative Assistant Appreciation Day is next Wednesday. Put that on the radar. Next Wednesday, April twenty-seventh is Secretary Appreciation Day, so, want to give them a big, big shout out on camera there. Better than watching. Um, we had a couple winners in the state for our Iowa Radon Poster Contest, uh, we had first and second, actually, at our Keakon Schools.
Very talented.
Natasha Cale, yeah, and really very, yeah, exactly, very, very, that's hard word. Sixth grader, sixth grader Natasha Cale earned a three hundred dollar, um, award for that, and eighth grader Destiny Bennett took second with a two hundred dollar award for that. And they're on Facebook, if you haven't had a chance to see those yet, check them out, pretty, uh, artistic kids.
Very great.
Twenty-three kids were sent to the state science fair, we had six honorable mentions there, so again, um, I know Ari was here earlier, uh, and Sarah Hawkins also helped her out, they've done a really nice job, I know they're taking some kids, or Ari's taking some kids to Phoenix from the high school here in a couple weeks, so a lot of good things happening with state science fair, and then our robotics club as well, you can see them on Facebook, we have several students, um, earned first place at the SEC Tater Toss Contest, so. A lot of good things, a lot of talented kids, I know several, we voted on our book park contest going on, our media center, and again, I'm just amazed at the things kids can do, I can't draw anything, I can't write anything.
But amazing teacher too, uh, very creative children.
And then she's gonna duplicate the winners, and then those will be actual books next year in middle school.
Wonderful.
Yep, and there's a, our art teacher, um, Ms. Luff is also doing a competition to design our cover, as they did last year, for our student handbook, so that's going on right now as well. We'll see good things from them, we know what's ahead.
Yeah, um, our first middle school track meet is tomorrow, April nineteenth, um, if you get a chance, come out.
First home meet.
First home meet, uh, we'll have a girls' meet later, but the first one for boys is April nineteenth, starts at four-thirty. Um, I wanted to give a little date on our fundraiser that we had for our chip shop, uh, we raised over five thousand dollars, um, to go towards our incentives. Um, we sold about thirteen thousand product, and we, we cashed in forty percent on that, um, so a couple of cool dates coming up for our kids. May twenty-fourth is our big blast party, and we're gonna have inflatables outside, um, local Keakon police are gonna come in and grill out for our kids, um, we're gonna have music, it's our second to last day of school, and it's, um, a nice incentive party for all the students that sold product, and we're gonna have a chance to get all the kids down there to play in the inflatables as the day goes on. Um, May twenty-fifth, due to our fundraiser, we're gonna be able to have a student choice day, uh, which we're gonna offer, uh, three, uh, local field trips for our kids, um, totally paid for by the fundraiser, uh, it, it's gonna include Y N C A, um, the bowling alley, and then the local movie theater, um, so all, all entry will be, uh, paid through our fundraiser, our activities, and we're super excited about that. Um, KMS PTO Carnival is this Saturday, um, it's at Hy-Vee, Hy-Vee is offered to, um, all the money that's made by the carnival is gonna go straight to KMS PTO, so we're super excited, Hy-Vee was willing to do that for us, um, so we've got a lot of volunteers, including myself and Gary, that'll be out, and how, yeah, so, yeah, there's
And Russ.
And Russ on there, I think I'm doing, uh, fucking talks.
And you're in the donkey.
Don't take, don't take the Russ, yes. No, but, uh, it's from eleven to three at Hy-Vee.
Eleven to three, yep.
Eleven to three, ten o'clock for, uh, people coming around.
First shift.
Um, so I just wanted to say a few things about what our PTO has done, uh, it's just been incredible, we just started this year, uh, yes, the galas, and everyone involved with our PTO has just been fabulous, we're hoping to grow it as, as we move on, um, it's just our first year in the making. Um, we're excited to say that pretty much every sport will have brand new uniforms next year. Um, our track uniforms will be brand new, our, uh, we're, we're having all our brand new warmups, uh, for track, have you seen those warmups? They say the Keakon Athletics with the sweats, our kids, like, some of them, I don't even know if they have a meet, and they're wearing them to school, they really like them, so, that's awesome. Um, basketball uniforms, we're looking to replace over the summer. Um, also, uh, we're looking at our volleyball to see if there's a need there, and they're quite possibly is gonna be, uh, so we'll get those replaced as well. And then our brand new football uniforms next year through our J.J. Watt Foundation Grant, so we've got all brand new uniforms for our kids, and we're super excited, uh, about that. Um, so they'll have a lot of pride in our school and what we do.
You know, I'd love to see an article about that in the paper.
Yeah?
You know?
That's, that's true, yeah.
Well, I mean, about, you know, oh, this is exciting for middle school when what's happened.
That's a great idea.
Our reporter, our reporter has left, she had to go cover something else, but I, I would really like for people, more people, put that on the website and see if we can get an article in the paper about it.
I'm not trying to eat, well, I am.
Well, we'll talk about that, yeah.
You got it.
Yeah, I knew, I, I.
Delegation.
So, well, moving forward, um, our grade level teams have got together, uh, because we don't want to just be athletic-based, um, so next year, after we get our uniforms taken care of, we're looking at educational needs right now, our grade level teams are working on that, kind of talking, and I'm gonna move on and move from there, so, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. And finally, I don't know, they always, we, we always leave this one here again. Yes, the high school, Mr. Ligo and Mrs. Davis.
So, um, we have been gearing up for MAP testing, which begins next week, and that will go until May thirteenth, so, um, pretty excited that the kids will do well and show their improvement from, from the fall to the spring. Uh, also, this weekend is prom, so, get a chance to go out to Rand Park and see everyone in their lovely dresses and handsome tuxes, that would be wonderful. The dance is at Myers Sportyard.
Yeah, Myers Sport.
So, yeah, it's always like a good chance of rain, right? Um, but Myers, and then we'll have post-prom at high school, and after that, so, and I know that the post-prom committees are working really hard, getting
There's a lot involved, isn't there?
Yes, yes. Um, so our spring activities are in full swing with tennis going on, and track, and, um, the golf team, and soccer teams, so soccer teams are very busy tonight, as a matter of fact, taking on a ton of bulldogs.
How's tennis?
So, so they're doing very well, um, with that, so that's really awesome, we're super proud of the athletes, and, um, how well they have represented us everywhere. And then graduation activities, um, are going to be starting soon, um, there's, all of those kids have been putting in for the scholarships, and we've been kind of giving you updates on how many applicants there's been for scholarships and things like that.
I was so glad to see that, Miss Steve, I, we imagined that, but there was a wonderful, you know, in one of those doctor decisions, they were just, I appreciate that, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, no, that's okay, um, yes, so those, all of the scholarships, the kids have been putting in their application form, um, just, there's, it just, I am amazed at how wonderful of a class we have of seniors, other academics have been really awesome this year, so. So being new to the, to the building and everything, it's nice to see that with the kids. Um, we had last Friday, the University of Iowa mobile lab was at the, at high school, so I don't know if anybody had a chance to go over and look at that, but that was really neat, and the kids really enjoyed that very much, so, um, a big shout out to Jessica Kohler for arranging that, bringing that together, something that she had heard about when she was there at one of the trips with her son, and was able to arrange it to come down, so, it was really neat.
Yeah, uh, I'll just share, again, obviously Iowa Assessments are finishing, we're gonna finish all of our stragglers. But one thing that we really, this hasn't been a focus really for us, um, over the last couple years, just as far as proficiency. Growth, growth has really been the topic, and, and growing every one of our kids, so, um, however, this year we had a chance at the eleventh grade level, so the class of twenty seventeen, could be the first class ever that, where we have to report out on, what we get judged on as a school, to be eighty-eighty-eight, so eighty percent proficient in reading math and science, we were at seventy-nine, seventy-six, and seventy-two. And since eighth grade, that has gone up from the fifties, so, and again, that has been a focus of ours, but obviously the work that our teachers have put in over the last few years is paying off. Now, is that really gonna matter a whole lot, is it in regards to, um, you know, are we a Sinon, are we a Dyna, or do we meet AYP? Not really now, because they're kind of freezing everything, and nothing really matters, um, in regards to how we do, but I still, I know our kids put a lot into, to those tests, and I appreciate, um, not only their hard work, but our teachers, again, making that, um, an important component to, to what we do, so. Parent teacher conference number is not as good as the other, the other buildings, pretty on par, uh, for the most part, we sent out over two hundred invitations, um, handwritten invitations to families, families that usually maybe don't come or, or are connected, um, so that's something that we've, we've tried to do at different times throughout the year. The numbers that I've got say we had seven hundred and ninety-five people that came to conferences, so that could be any, a seven-person family, it could be that many people came in the doors. Now, actual conference numbers, we had forty-nine, uh, students at the freshman levels, that's about forty percent of them, uh, thirty-eight students at the sophomore level, that's about twenty-five-ish percent, forty-two juniors, which is about twenty-eight percent, and then we only had twenty seniors, which is about thirteen percent. So roughly, uh, twenty-five-ish percent, um, as a building, last year we were on thirty, I think, in the spring. Traditionally, the spring is lower than the fall, and I think honestly, part of, again, they're low, I, I get that, I, I still think we need to do, do a better job finding more ways to get them there on that day specifically, but I, I would also acknowledge that I, I, I think our teachers really communicate well, they're updating Power School weekly, and if they're not, then they know that they're not, um, so, all of those things I think has helped parent communication and them understanding where their kid really is sitting in a, in a class. But, um, still, I, you know, not super, um, pumped about it, um, so.
Do you count email conferences?
Phone, email, that's gifts, um, I mean, again, a, a lot of those are happening all the time, uh, with parents or, or teachers, but specific to that day, yes, we do. So, we had a teacher, I think, who had ten of them on the phone, um, for whatever reason, the parents couldn't come, or didn't come, or whatever. Now, again, it just encouraged me, I mean, so much of our, uh, information, whether it's academic, you know, accolades, extracurricular, co-curricular, um, achievements, are on, you know, our, our K-Pride Facebook page, we have almost fifteen hundred followers, and on Twitter now, hashtag K-Pride, um, we had the hashtag One My School last Monday, you can see, just go on the hashtag, you can see a lot of different things kids are excited about for, for proud, um, that have to do with, with K-Pride High School, so. Um, obviously the, there's a lot on there, and it's, again, it's updated by students and staff, so, not just.
There's one, one more student, I think, Austin Dur, who entered into the World Foot Prize,
Yep.
And, uh, I think he has to be congratulated too for, he's gonna be presenting his research paper, uh, at the World Foot Prize, at Ames, I believe.
Well, you said the students updated, as if through a class or a club. Volunteers that come in and, oh, I wasn't aware of that.
What's the last, Austin? Yeah, Austin Dur, right. Yeah, that's a great.
You have a lot to report, you two, all very good. You going to prom too?
Have a great Saturday.
And then, that's where you, that's right. No, but you were saying, that's where you sit and do the.
Yes.
Yeah.
She has experience, you know.
I have not, I am excited, and I will bring coffee.
Lots of black coffee, yes. And finally, Mr. Hoof and Mr. St. John.
Okay, uh, I'd also like to say thanks to all the folks who make the Iowa Assessment run.
Okay, uh, I'd also like to say thanks to all the folks who make the Iowa Assessment run well, um, just wanted to say that publicly. I am not the favorite person this time of year because this is the testing time and doing math and the last round of fast testing and D E testing and all of that. I actually got booed in one of the buildings the other day when I brought the test in.
Oh.
So, uh, and I, and I get it, and I totally understand it, but I appreciate everybody's effort, because I know it's a deal. Um, so I want to say thanks for that. Another thing, uh, KIC's been selected to be a pilot, um, program for a summer school initiative that the Iowa Reading Research Center has put on. So KIC's went to partner with the Iowa Reading Research Center to provide a smaller scale, um, summer enrichment program for, for reading for third grade students. And I went to the Hawthorne staff today to present those options and talk about what that process will look like. So, um, in May, I'll have a more updated presentation on what this will look like, and I'll know names and who's doing what. But basically, the Iowa Reading Research Center is going to fund a vast majority portion of this program that's gonna impact about forty-five kids for our, in our third grade class, um, who need some additional support reading.
How do we get selected, or do you have to make an application, I'm gonna come about?
We made an app, the district made an application for, and was selected as part of the process. And so that, I just wanted to update you, so when you see some postings come through for a summer enrichment reading program, that's what that's for. And like I said, in May, we'll give you a bigger update on when we know who's doing what and all of that. But there's some parameters that we need to follow, but it's an awesome opportunity for our kids, because as of right now, next summer, we're required to have that summer program. And so I'd like to get us started on the right foot by getting started and, and all of that. And we're not required mandated this year to do it, but it'd be nice to get this thing rolling and get, you know, things worked out.
If they mandate that next summer, are they going to give any funding for this?
We're, current, current, right now, it's slated to be in effect. So right now, if a kid's considered substantially deficient on our fast assessment in third grade, so that means that they've been below benchmark for two testing periods in a row. So they have to test below benchmark two consecutive periods, then they're considered substantially deficient. So then, at the end of third grade, those kids are substantially deficient, we're required by law to retain them unless they attend a summer reading program. And so right now, we're slated for this summer reading program, and that's what that looks like. So right now, nothing's changed in the legislation, there's rumors that they're gonna table the retention piece, there's, there's, but right now, nothing's funded. We do receive some small amount of funding for early literacy implementation, but it's not enough to run a program and buy materials and all of that.
Would you know at this point whether the voluntary literary group that comes in school, will you need?
We're actually going to, we're gonna work in tandem with that piece, so what we're gonna do is we're gonna run this program actually at the high school. So that way, when they're, when the teacher's day is done, we're gonna hand those kids over to the literacy group. And, and also coincide with the summer lunch program, so they'll finish the day eating lunch at our lunch program with our third grade kids, and then we're gonna provide transportation as well for kids.
Wonderful.
Yeah, we've got a phenomenal opportunity here that I'm really excited about.
How many days is it?
Twenty-five, it's gonna be roughly three hours a day for twenty-five days, because the, the code, right now, the current code says we need to provide at least seventy-five hours of instruction.
Forty-five students, or?
Forty-five students, correct, so we're gonna have three teachers and then another teacher that's gonna kind of oversee the program. So we'll have three total teachers work with fifteen kids apiece, and that's part of the parameters of working with the Iowa Reading Research Center. Obviously, when it becomes our own program, the numbers will have to change depending upon how many kids are, um, eligible for the program.
And so how, how did they, you select the teachers, were they volunteers?
It'll be a psych in position that they apply for.
Psych in that they apply for.
Yep.
And you, that's all in place?
Yep, we're, the, the last thing we need to do then is post the positions, and then, uh, we'll start recruiting some kids and go from there. And Jeremy and everybody at the Hawthorne has a plan for, um, how we're gonna recruit kids. Yeah, part of that comes with, um, the parameter of working with the Iowa Reading Research Center, and they want us to use certain materials. The great news is, is we already used what they've asked for, so we're currently implementing, which is why I wanted to do this opportunity. We're, we're part of a research study as well, so what they're gonna do is they're gonna look at our student data to see growth, basically implementing a program and then growth over time over these twenty-five days. So we're, we're part of a research study in addition to a summer program. They'll, they'll utilize the fast assessment over the summer, so it'll be, let's give, let's say, five to seven days of instruction, then we'll do the fast assessment, five to seven more days of instruction to see what programs are getting names and all of that, but it's all good for our kids, which is exciting.
It's just a win-win program.
Yeah, absolutely, this was a no-brainer from my part, because I wanted to start something before it was mandated, and this was a nice, nice opportunity. That's all.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Much good news. Mr. Hood, do you have anything for us?
Uh, we believe that we have been selected for the, uh, grade nine, ten I J program, those kids.
Ooh.
So we are very excited about that, Mr. Rybick and I, and the head, and Heidi were on a conference call with it today, and, uh, we believe that we have been the district selected. So we're very excited about that, it'll be something that will definitely benefit some of our ninth and tenth grade kids and be able to actually go over to the middle school and do some things as well. So extremely excited about that. Um, also, um, we probably need to change our task force meeting for Monday night, um, so.
Yes, I think it's going to be Thursday, whenever that day comes.
Okay. Twenty-one.
Yes. Middle school at six thirty.
It'll be at the middle.
And just want to let you know that, um, we have selected a new athletic director, and I went and did a community visit and heard nothing but very positive, positive things. Visited every place you could visit in Dunkirk, it's not very big, so.
How could you get Dunkirk?
Uh, it's not very big, it's, it's probably six, seven, eight, eighty, eight hundred people, so, but, very, very excited, uh, Jason's very excited for the position as well, so.
We have that.
Yep.
What's his background? Oh, I'm sorry.
He has, uh, teacher coach right now, he's their A.D., transportation director, computer teacher, and basketball coach, and baseball coach.
System.
System baseball coach, so, he's looking forward to being able to counsel anyone.
He's got a special background too? Well, I mean, he was on some, he's on some state board or has been on some state board for special, I, I think he'd appreciate your business about that, your background.
Yes. He's, um, he's done a lot of different things, and, uh, I'm very, I'm, I'm very happy that he's accepted this and is fully through with it.
He's signed contract for eleven.
You were busy this week, oh. Anything else, Tim, that you'd like to add?
Nope.
Okay, so now what we have to do is, um, approve the, and that's in our packet, you know, the personnel. Okay, have you had a chance to look at this, everybody? And there were some, you know, additions and so forth, um, there's quite a bit in there, there's, so, are there any questions? No?
I'd like to recommend, recommend that you improve the updated list.
May I have a motion?
Go move.
Alka moves, a second.
Second.
Gary seconds, that we approve the personnel, uh, updated list. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign, the motion passes. So therefore, if there's no other business before us, meeting is adjourned.